Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence. I would like to call our meeting to order. It is November 17 at approximately 6:30 PM. And we are missing Councilmember Vodaford, but everyone else is present. We do not have any ceremonial items, so we will move on to the approval of an.
I'm here today representing Oviedo Memorial Post 243, the Department of Florida American Legion. I'm their commander. Our post has served veterans and Oviedo community since 1946. We've been at our current location adjacent to Oviedo High School at 491 West Broadway Street since 1957. Our membership has tripled in recent years, and we need to expand our building to better serve the area veterans, their families, local charitable organizations, and our growing membership. Recent changes to the city zoning code, which wasn't available yet. We were given two options. We could pay $8,500 for a special review or wait for the city's anticipated glitch ordinance to be enacted in October, November. Just as information to remind you, we're a nonprofit. We rely solely on fundraising donations and do not have recurring revenue from sources like a bar or a restaurant as other veteran service organizations do. So the fee is just so large, it's unattainable.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so I think I am a yes on all of these. All right, so I think I am a yes on all of these, but I also, but I also think it is important to say out loud, I think it is important to say out loud for everyone to hear. And perhaps if I have these questions, everybody has these questions. I don't know.
Good evening. So I'll do my best to answer it. So most engineering projects are done in phases. Many times we're afforded the opportunity to be able to encapsulate that all in one contract. Sometimes projects are more complex, and so you, more often than more often than not, what we budget for engineering plans and studies is usually within what we estimate, not always. But this is a kind of a unique case. It's a complicated project. And admittedly, when we estimated what it would take to do the engineering, we underestimated it. And that's, that's a fair assessment of that.
So follow-up question on that, just for logistics purposes. We have standing contracts where we have gone out to bid with multiple companies, correct?
Correct. We have five consultants that we selected under the stormwater contract.
Okay, so they, these are being, these are being sort of.
The current scope that we're talking about, like I said, I would, I would imagine it's going to be in that 30 to 40% of the total range, and then the design and permitting would, would probably be another 50 or 60%, if that makes sense. That, that's a rough guess.
So if I look at 120,000 for the preliminary study and the design is something above that, that's 30 or 40% of the overall project?
I think, I didn't understand your question.
Okay, so that, just to, I brought that up just to give you a kind of a scale of, of how these projects work. Does engineering effort is usually about 10% of the total project cost? And that, you know, you could do it one of two ways. You can use that as a number to estimate the cost, or you can start with an estimate, a RAM estimate, and determine what your design costs will be.
Right, right.
So then doing the quick math, you anticipate this to be a $2.5 million project?
I, I don't.
Mayor, Mayor Sladek.
Aye.
Councilmember Ott.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Tugert.
Aye.
Councilmember Britton.
Aye.
The motion carries. We'll move on to item number 11, which is ordinance number 1760, Evaluation and Appraisal-Based Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Can the city attorney read the ordinance by title?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending the City of Oviedo Comprehensive Plan based on the city's evaluation and appraisal of the comprehensive plan pursuant to Section 163.3191 Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, severability, codification, as well as the correction of scrupulous errors, and an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Dr. Correa will be giving the stat presentation.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor. Mayor, according to our table of permissible uses in the LDC, it shows as, as P in the, in the table. We have secondary uses in the comprehensive plan that are allowed either as a special exception use order, or as a, if they are single use, or if they are part of a mixed-use development. And then we have other uses that are only allowed under special exception. And we had the categories, but we did not have the clarification, what, what they meant, so we created this policy to make it clear. Next slide, please. The other change that we did was to match, you know, to comply with the statutes and to include solar facilities under rural future land use. And the next one, next slide, please, is the floating solar facilities, and that is to be permissible under rural institution and public future land uses. And in the glitch ordinance that we are bringing next month to council, we, the LDC will reflect those, those uses. Next slide, please. We also cleared, or cleaned in the, in the, in the comprehensive plan, the references to the mobility plan, because some references were still that the city will develop. This is already being adopted last year. So in the land use, we clarified this one, and we clarified also in the transportation element. Next slide, please. We also matching the statutes, we are required to include resiliency facilities under, as a permissible use in any commercial industrial future land use designations. And then I just put the definition here of what a resiliency facility is. It's a public utility facility dealing with natural gas. This is also going to be reflected in the LDC. Next slide, please. On the transportation, the only thing that we did is to clear the language, to clean the language on the concurrency. We do not require concurrency anymore, so this is just remove language to match the mobility plan approved last year. Next slide. Oh, this is just showing the, the changes that we done. Next slide, please. In the housing element, we just changed the deadline of 2025 to 2029 to adopt a green building ordinance, and that maybe we could discuss later. But, so these are to create, to bring requirements for a green building ordinance. At this point, we already incentivize green building, and the, the con plan and the LDC have that as a criteria for density and intensity bonus. So we already incentivize, but we do not have requirements for new development to meet green building standards. So we kind of postponed that conversation for 2029. We could not adopt anything right now anyway, because it would be more restrictive, and the statutes prevent us from doing that. Next slide, please. On the capital improvements element, the Public Works provided, there is this policy that needs to be included in the con plan to allow for master study to convert properties from septic to sewer, if they have more than 50 dwelling units, and they, they have septic. So that is a language that we included. The city is completing wastewater septic to sewer master study, and this is just to, to reflect that, that we are in the process of bringing that. And the other change that we did, next slide, please, is to, is update on all the projects for the capital improvement element. So the projects that were already completed, we deleted, and we included new, new projects, and this is to match the city's capital improvement plan. And the last changes, next slide, reflect the future land use map. So this is just showing seven properties, but they are, it's hard to see, so I'll go over them if we go to the next slide. So the first one is of those properties around Round Lake Park. So they are city-owned properties, and we are changing. So on the left side, you have the existing map. So you have MDR and commercial. It's one, two, three, and four properties, and now we are changing them to public. So these are only city-owned property, and we are changing to make it compliant with, with the real use they have. Next slide. The next one are those two properties around Lockwood Boulevard. They have rural future land use today, and then we are making it compliant to public. They are city-owned property as well. The third one is the cemetery that we annexed a couple of years ago. They have today a county future land use, so we are also designating public to that property. And these are all the changes that we are proposing in this year amendment, and staff recommends transmittal to the Florida Department of Commerce.
Thank you. I do not have any written request to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council at this time? At that, I will close public comment and ask what the pleasure of council is.
For purposes of discussion, I move we approve or re-adopting ordinance. Oh, we know, we're setting it for public hearing, right?
Transmitting.
We're going to set it for public hearing.
Transmitting.
Transmit it. Okay, we're going to transmit it, but I would like to propose we change some of the language regarding the green building ordinance for those concerns and how, how they might be addressed.
Right. Madeline, could you pull up that document that I put out there? Mayor did ask, ask us today. She mentioned the green building ordinance and whether or not it was really something that we wanted to impose as a minimum standard on, on housing. Because one of the things about, with a lot of the movement today is more toward an affordable, affordable housing and sustainable housing. And the thing about it is, is that the objective that these policies, Dr. Correa mentioned that they, they changed it from 25 to 29, probably mostly because of Senate Bill 180, but the objective was to promote green technology in housing, is what it was. That's the objective. And one of the things that we looked at was, as Dr. Correa mentioned, was that in the land settlement, if you use green housing, if you use green building standards or green building technology, that's the way to get a density bonus. So one of the, one of the things that I thought about is it was, as the mayor, mayor mentioned that, you know, this, this, this could cause an increase in the cost, really, is what it could do, especially with today's technology. So what I looked at was, okay, what is the objective? The objective is to promote green technology. That's the objective. It's not really to require. And so one of the things that I looked at was that we could encourage and promote rather than establishing a minimum standard. And so that's what these do. The, the first one, the 3.116, is to encourage the incorporation of energy-saving design. And it does make it a requirement, but if they do come in with it, then it's something that we would encourage them to do. Building materials, promoting the use of renewable and/or local building materials. And then the last one, as far as the green building certification, there's a number of certification programs out there. LEED is probably the most widely known. And so what it'd be, be promoting green certification of development within the city, obviously taking out the part as far as the Florida Administrative Code, because if you're just promoting it, not making it a minimum standard, then you really don't have to worry about whether they're developing a rule or not. The, the Department of Commerce has not really been one to develop rules. So that, that was, I hope that was what you were looking for. And, but this is something, if you want to make it part of your motion, basically, it would be to amend those, to remove the requirement for adoption of a green building ordinance and to revise as we've presented it here.
Okay. I would like to amend my motion to reflect these changes.
Sure.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with this. I like the idea of people choosing to use sustainable and renewable, and I think that's the direction the market is heading, so I think we'll get there. But having us mandate this is, is a little, it, we can't, so perhaps we can't accomplish all the goals all at the same time in all types of housing.
Who decides what's green? So that's some new information up there. So, and if it's in there, I apologize, I didn't see it.
It, it's not in there. It's something that the mayor and I worked on this afternoon.
No, no, no. Well, sorry.
2029.
Oh, as far, as far as the policy is concerned, yes, that policy it was, is in, is in the housing element that's connected to the ordinance. But the only change was to change the 2025 to 2029.
Well, I think, the question is, when, when we say green building materials like low solar absorption roof or something like that?
It could be like that. It could be.
Well, presumably, there's a threshold that says this is low solar, was low, I mean? And, and who decides what those thresholds are? And is there some kind of standard?
I believe, yes, there are. There are construction standards out there. It's through different programs. One is LEED. That's probably the most commonly known program where they establish, they address all kinds of different ones, as far as roofing, windows, doors, different materials, paint. They have a whole menagerie of stuff. One of our buildings, actually, one of our public works buildings, LEED certified. And, Dr. Correa, if you want to.
Yeah, I was just going to add, well, Mr. Cobb is correct. So the LEED, so the certifications is, are very specific, right? And actually, they are hard to get, because they are so specific. And usually, the cost is an increased cost. In our LDC and in the con plan, we have for density bonus, and we give some examples. So you provide anything in the, that is part of a green building and/or in the, on the site, that if you go for stormwater, you know, that is low impact, if you have solar, if you, anything in the direction, right, of being more sustainable, then it can be, you have to demonstrate that you are doing that, and then you could get density or intensity bonus. The, the LDC details a little bit what, what those things could be, but the certification, to get a LEED certification or to get one of the certifications, it's very detailed. They have very specific standards.
And then we would decide on a, not on a case-by-case basis. You said it's in the land development code, which, how much green gives how much density bonus? These are standards that are already existing?
And we have, so we have some, some, we quantify, you know, what that, you know, whatever you're giving, how much it will receive in density or intensity bonus. But all of, any density or intensity bonus comes with a development agreement. So that would come to council for a discussion. So it's not something that staff grants, and that is in the code. That is only granted through a development agreement, and that's approved by council.
Okay.
The other thing that I was going to say, that Florida Building Code also kind of updates, you know, those technologies. So there are some standards that come with the Florida Building Code every time there is an update.
Yeah. And I totally agree with this. So as far as encouraging versus requirement, I actually talked to, there is an organization that LEED certifies and does all this, and they're at Lega City every year, and I talk to them every year. And they touted that they have cities adopt it, so they can deny development based on it, which is so unfortunate, because we do want green initiatives. But I think we have that in our code already. And I do think we should encourage it as much as possible, but I don't want it to be used as a tool in the negative, so.
Deputy Mayor, before you take your vote, if I could, and I just wanted to think, Mr. Ott and I talked about this afternoon. This is a little bit different. We haven't done one of these in quite a while, as far as this type of comprehensive plan amendment. This is a two-step process, and what, what it is, is that tonight, we're asking you, and the, this isn't like your normal recommendation, nor, you know, to adopt or deny. Tonight, we ask you to approve transmittal. And what that means is, is that this is the first, this is the first of two hearings before the council. There was a hearing before the local planning agency. They made a recommendation. The, tonight's the first hearing. This hearing is to transmit to the state. We will take this package of amendments, if you approve it, we'll take the package of amendments, and we'll send it up to the Department of Commerce. They'll review it. And I can't remember how long they have to review it. I was telling Mr. Ott today, I remember back when, when I was Dr. Correa, it was 60 days. And then we had 30, once we got everything back. But they will, they will send us back a review, the results of their review, and then we will bring it back to you a second time for another public hearing, which will be an adoption hearing. And that's when we will ask you to adopt the amendments. And so that's, it's a little bit different than what we've normally been doing. So I just wanted to just give you that information too, as well.
Councilmember Britton.
I'm good.
You're good.
Good job.
Anything else? All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Mayor Sladek.
Aye.
Councilmember Ott.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Tugert.
Aye.
Councilmember Britton.
Aye.
The motion carries. We're going to move on to item number 12, which is the first reading of ordinance number 1761. Mr. Rose, would you read the ordinance by title?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending Chapter 28, Articles 1 and 2 of the City of Oviedo Code of Ordinances, updating impact fees for parks and recreation, fire and rescue, law enforcement and administrative facilities, revising related definitions, processes, and methods of calculation, adopting an impact fee technical report for parks and recreation, fire and rescue, law enforcement and administrative facilities, revising definitions concerning mobility fees, and providing for conflicts, severability, codification, correction of scrupulous errors, and an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If you remember with your last meeting, we had a discussion item where Mr. Paul came in and presented the technical study for the update for our law enforcement, fire, administrative services, and recreation impact fees. Tonight is the first reading of the ordinance. We are recommending that you schedule a public hearing for December 1st, 2025. Mr. Paul is here tonight and is available to make a, make a presentation to you, if you'd like him to make the presentation, or if you would rather wait until the public hearing, we can do that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I guess I will ask if anybody would like the presentation.
Is it the same one we just saw last week?
That's a yes.
Can you make it briefer? We have a rather lovely-sized audience today. I'm seeing some people shaking their heads. Can you make it five minutes or shorter?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Do you need a minute to sit up here?
No, if they've got the presentation.
Okay.
Perfect.
I, I think there is value in everybody in the room knowing what it is we're voting on.
Yes. No, thank you very much. Jonathan Paul, Principal of New Urban Concepts, presenting an update of the City of Oviedo's impact fees for fire rescue, for parks, and recreation, for administrative facilities, and police facilities. Florida statute requires these fees to be updated every four years and to be based on the most recent and localized data. Next slide. There's a detailed technical report that is available on the city's website that will go into all the technical bases and all the legal bases for the impact fee updates and their full calculated rates. Next slide. These fees, per Florida statute, will be phased in over the next four years, the, should the council elect to move forwards on the first with adoption. These fees would go into effect March of 2026, and then the next phase in, and subsequent phase ins would go into effect each January 1st, 2027, 2028, and then ultimately in 2029. And the city, by 2028, would have begun an updated study for their new fees. Next slide. One of the big changes is we did include an update to small retail businesses. This goes all the way back to the mobility fee that was adopted last year. Our initial definition is five or fewer locations. It's non-chain retail use, and it's 3,000 square feet or less in size. This is basically providing some criteria to the language we've had before. And I think it's, it's a metric that the city staff itself has been using for the last year or so. Next slide. There is significant growth being proposed within the City of Oviedo over the next 10 years, which is the horizon for the parks and the various impact fees, and that played into the factor of the overall calculations. Next slide. We also looked at employment within the city. Next slide. And the share of that employment that is within and with outside the city limits, and those all play into factors for calculating the fees themselves. Next slide. Then we combined both employment and population together to help us project out what the future needs are. Next slide. And then we looked at what the city population is in terms of current employees, to make sure that new development is not being held to a different standard than existing residents. Next slide. I'll skip this one as well. So basically, we projected out a need for additional law enforcement personnel, fire rescue personnel, personnel for the park and recreation department, and also administrative staff over the next 10 years. Next slide. These just show some of the existing park facilities within the City of Oviedo that were used to determine capital improvements for the future. Next slide. And this is just some examples of parks within the city. The city has a standard in its comprehensive plan to determine the parks needed for new development. We've looked at this calculation, and this is making sure that new development provides park space that it needs at the same rate as existing residents in Oviedo have been providing park space. Next slide. And ultimately, the total attributable cost to new development is roughly $6 million. Next slide. And then they'd also pay for a share of upgrades to existing park facilities of roughly $10 million. Next slide. That relates to an overall cost of roughly 10 million, and their share of that is roughly 1.1 million, ensuring that new development's paying the same as existing residents through various means. Next slide. Next slide. And ultimately, that all this results in a park impact fee. This is something that new development only pays for. These are not taxes on existing residents. These are not assessments on existing residents. If you are building a brand-new home in Oviedo, and you come in for a building permit, or a multifamily unit, or a mobile home, then you would essentially pay these fees that are illustrated above on a per-dwelling-unit basis. Next slide. And parks' fees are just paid for residential uses only, and this is just an example of how they'd be phased in over 2026, 2027, and subsequent years. Next slide. This shows the existing fire rescue facilities in the city. Next slide. Next slide. This shows the calculated need for a fire station and vehicles attributable to new growth. Next slide. Shows our existing police facilities, the calculations to determine what their fee would be in the future. This also shows existing facilities, such as the one we're all sitting in this evening for public facilities, and the cast of, the cost of calculations for the future need within the city. And then ultimately, there's some other factors that go into play, and if you'd like to hear more about these, you could read the technical report, or come to the first hearing. We go into these a little bit more detail. Next slide. Actually, you can go through these until we get to the fees themselves. And then these are just the examples of the phased-in rates for the various impact fees. And again, these are all fees that are paid by new development. The city has had impact fees for over 20-plus years now. So this is not a new program. It's not a new tax. It's not a new hit on development. It's essentially a requirement of Florida statute that these fees be updated every four to five years, and that this is a share of what new development would pay to help offset the costs for a new fire station, for expansion of the police facility, for new police vehicles, for new parks, and for new administrative facilities as well. And you can just circle through these. And these are all just the existing rates that are being updated for the various fees. And these are all just the existing rates that are being updated for the various fees, and you'll see each one of them goes into effect over a four-year period. And again, all this information is available on the city's website. The city's staff will put you in touch with myself, or they'll answer questions that you may all have. This is the first reading. If there's any specific direction from the council for us to make changes, we'll do so this evening. And then we will actually have a second reading for adoption on December 2nd, 2025. I do believe that there was one comment about accessory dwelling units, and I note that we needed to bring that up here for this.
We did.
Okay. We've had a recent discussion on accessory dwelling units, which is something that's currently allowed within the city, but it's pretty recent. The single-family rate itself would be relatively high for accessory dwelling units. So we feel, as of right now, the most appropriate would be for them to be under the multifamily or the, the mobile home category, which is averages about 1.8 residents per dwelling unit. That's probably the one that's the closest to that in terms of the, the parks, the fire, and then we have a further evaluation on that. But we are proposing to just add the label accessory dwelling unit behind mobile residence on the fee schedule. With that, that concludes my presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions while he's up here?
I think, just one clarification. Are we gonna, is our meeting on December 2nd or December 1st?
December 1st.
December 1st. Okay. Just a typo.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
What is the pleasure of the conference?
I move we schedule ordinance number 1761 for a public hearing on December 1st, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
For everyone who just heard this five-minute thing, what we're talking about here is the thing that everybody says we want to do, and that is charge new people for all the problems we have. And the proposal here is to charge the highest amount we are allowed to under Florida law, which, when you hear about this phasing in, we're not allowed to just hop right away to what we have mathematically calculated the actual impact will be. So we are doing our very best up here to accelerate the speed at which we do these studies and hop our impact fees to the right place. That being said, quick clarification from staff, that if somebody were to, say, want to expand a gathering place that might be near Oviedo High School, that if that application is in prior to March 2026, the new impact fees would not apply, but the old impact fees would apply.
That is correct.
Okay. And just another clarification, under Florida law, we are not allowed to waive impact fees. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So impact fees cannot be waived. And that is an important thing for people to know, because there's a lot of times allegations that we are giving impact fee, you know, negotiating with developers to let them off the hook to cover the cost of the impacts they're bringing. We don't do that. The worst we could do is be stuck in a situation like this where the cost of inflation has been so accelerated that we're not legally allowed because of something that the state legislature has passed to charge the right fee. So the next four years, you'll see on here that we're, we're upping our impact fees, but we will still not charge enough to cover the costs of the impact that the new development will bring. But we're going to be staying on top of it as much as we can. So that's not exactly a hearing kind of a thing, and we will have another hearing on this next time, but like, it's the best we can do. And I wish we could do better. So I think that's something that all of you guys need to know, is that we, we are not allowed to charge more, and it's not because we don't want to. It's because the state will not let us. So if you were to fuss at your state legislators on this particular thing, I personally would be grateful for assistance from everybody, saying, let the cities do what they need to do to not have the impacts of people coming in from out of town have to be borne by the current people who already live here, because it's not fair. And I recognize it is not fair.
Anyone else?
That, that's enough. That's good.
All right. I, I agree. I will ask the...
Deputy Mayor, could, could, Mayor, could you include adding accessory dwelling units to the mobile residence land use code?
Yes. I'd like to amend my motion to include accessory dwelling units. But can we call them backyard cottages? Instead of ADUs? Does everything else say ADUs? Okay. We'll call it ADUs.
We need to call it accessory dwelling units, and just, we...
But for everybody in the audience, it's a backyard cottage. That's what we're talking about.
Okay. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. I'm sorry, does the secondary agree to the amended motion?
I will.
Yes. We're good. Mayor Sladek?
Aye.
Counselmember Britton?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Tugert?
Aye.
Counselmember Ott?
Aye.
The motion carries. So we don't have any resolution items or discussion items, so we will move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm sorry. I, I just want to wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving and hope you have a wonderful holiday.
And congrats on being a grandpa.
Thank you.
Yes. I feel like that's some big news here.
Yes, we're, we're, we're very excited.
All right. The city attorney's report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I understand forward from the city manager that the council received an email last week from an organization called the Freedom for Religion Foundation. It was in reference to a letter that that organization had sent to the city a number of months ago. It's relating to the Round Lake Park art installations that have been under development by the Parks Department. They've been working with the Parks Advisory Board. Just wanted to let you know that since the time that that letter initially came in, our office thoroughly reviewed the matter, looked at everything that was going on with federal and state law. So at this point, because they have asked a number of times, I think we are going to go ahead and send a brief response, just letting you know, thank you very much for that letter. We've reviewed it, and we believe we have done everything in compliance with First Amendment requirements. So just wanted to give you an update in that. Other than that, Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselmember Butterford's not here, so Counselmember Britton?
Okay, just a few things. Glad you all are here, because you had a great ceremony on the 11th. It's a very, very good Veterans Day ceremony. Appreciate all you guys do. And then, while we're talking about the American Legion, I know the mayor said there's no exception for impact fees, but this $8,500 study fee, Brian, is that something that we can get the study done without having to hit them with the cost, or?
Actually, that, that's the application fee for zoning map amendment.
That's, that's the fee?
Yes.
So they'd have to do it no matter what?
Well...
They don't have to.
No, not with the zoning map amendment. The, the other fee that was, it was for a site development order application.
Okay.
To expand the building.
Okay.
And I think that's around $6,500, if I remember correctly.
So they don't have to pay the $8,500?
No, sir.
Per person and $500,000 per incident? And they want to raise that to 600, and, no, they want to raise it to 300 and 1 million per incident, and eventually to 600 and 1.2 million per incident. What that means is if, if that passes, we're going to have to increase our insurance premiums by quite a bit. One estimate I saw was up to like 50%. So my, my testimony was to just bring that message to the, the committee and advise them, maybe they, there's a better way to do this, either index the, the current limits according to some index, CPI or whatever. But right now, that, that would be very onerous to every agency in the state, because they all come under the same sovereign immunity limits. So that was, that was my testimony. Another gentleman from Daytona Beach went up there with me, and the League of Cities also spoke, and that's who I was representing. The League of Cities actually asked me to go up there and do that, so.
Next up is me, and I actually want to see if Dr. Correa, could you come speak to this art in our chamber a little bit?
Should we hold? We should hold these.
I feel like we have some really cool art, and it's, the first time it's kind of been out here for a council meeting.
So actually, so, thank you, Deputy Mayor. We were going to have a ceremonial item today.
Okay.
This is the art of Kathleen Safi, and, but she could not be here today, so we are going to have a ceremonial item on the, on December 1st. But this is, well, it's already unveiled today. It's a beautiful...
Well, can we pivot to some butterflies, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, butterflies.
Well...
A sneak preview?
Well, yeah, the butterflies are here. We brought, this is, this is just the sample of the, the real thing. So this is, this is going to be the sculptures, the five sculptures that will come to Solari Park. Each one is a different butterfly, and they will be double-sided, so we have 20 panels. And this is photography being printed in metal. And this was the sample the company sent for us to approve the coloring and the, you know, and I just thought it was cool to also to share with all, with you all.
Yeah. I just, I love our public art, and it's cool. I'm glad we started this program to see it cycle through, so.
Well, and we have the, also the other project coming, which is the Jolie Project. Parks and Rec will provide the date.
We're just ironing that out. That'll be, I think, on the December 11th, I think, is what we agreed to. That's a, that's a Thursday. Probably have it somewhere in the mid-afternoon, like 3 o'clock, so that won't, it won't interfere with, with the Santa run, which I think is that week.
Okay.
And then it'll allow for some of us who would like to partake in a, a pre-ceremony round of golf to celebrate it. We can, we can do that.
Yeah. And we are going to invite the artists, carry them, and also the public art board and, you know, council to be there.
And they're, you know, I know Rickley doesn't live here, and I think Jolie was Rickley's uncle, but I'm going to reach out to maybe Tim Slattery and see if we can locate some of the old relatives and, and have them, you know, attend the ceremony.
Pretty cool. Well, I just like the art coming out, so thank you for doing that. I did want to hop back over to the Post Legion over here. So from what I understand is they could do zoning right now, but they can't because they're waiting on us. But if they wait on us, they don't have to pay the $8,000 fee, but they do have to pay the SDO fee, which is, you said, around $6,500.
I was actually looking it up. For a site development order, 0 to 20% deviation is 6,749.
Okay. So I, I mean, I know we do not waive fees. That's not how we operate with any kind of nonprofit. But as far as what we can do to help this organization that does a lot for the city, I would like to see if we can find something we can do to help them out here. I don't know if you guys have any input on that.
Well, we could sponsor something. Like, we, we used to do a lot of the events, the city used to have paid city employees do a lot of the things that the Post now does.
Right.
So we could sponsor, in a manner of speaking, in that way. And I don't know if it would show up as waived fees, or if it would show up as an actual changing of hands of money, and then they give it back, or how, how it might work.
But I guess I would like to see if we have consensus to find a way to help them out in some manner, because like, you, you are right. We just did the Veterans Day ceremony, and they led that whole process, and we don't pay them a cent. So they are an organization that helps the city out a lot. So if we have consensus up here to have staff look into some way we can help them out.
Absolutely.
And?
Yeah.
Seek private donations.
Mm-hmm.
Got to be someone out there that wants to help.
Okay. And that's all I have on this right now. So I will say Happy Thanksgiving, and it is Mayor Sladek's report.
All right. So this morning, I, I hopped down to the other side of the county, because Leadership Seminole is, was trying to get everybody to learn more about the Central Florida Pledge. And that is something that I signed over a year ago, whenever it first came out. It was inspired by everything that happened October 7th, 2023, over in Israel. And the idea is, let's all be nice to each other, basically. And so I guess today I'd like to suggest that this become a discussion item for a later date, because they have sort of shifted gears from individuals signing the pledge to asking organizations to organizationally consider coming on board. And it's a, it's a real basic thing, but the first one is, we will lead by example, treating all people with dignity and respect, especially those with whom we disagree. And I think this board does a really good job of that. We, we have a lot of 3-2 votes, 4-1 votes, and who the 3 and the 1 and the 2 are, it shifts around. Like, I, I can't imagine a better makeup than what we have going right now. And I think we extend that to everybody in Oviedo, too. But if there's a way to get access to extra resources through this organization, or it helps their mission grow in other jurisdictions where there may not be that kind of diversity of opinion that can coexist in the same place, I think it would be neat. So if y'all are cool with that, coming back is a, I don't know if it needs to be a discussion item, or a...
A work session?
What, what it would need to be, but...
Could you send it out to us?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So I don't want to ask y'all, y'all to decide on it now, because you haven't even seen the whole concept, but it's pretty basic. It's, it's like, let's all agree to let everybody have their own opinions and let their opinions be heard, accept them, and be friends, because we're all neighbors.
It's a good program.
It's a good program.
Yeah, so maybe send it out, and then we can put it as a discussion item. Does that work?
I can do that.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Counselmember Ott?
So I'm still a little unclear on what the problem is on the American Legion Post project. We, so we passed a, well, can somebody speak to that?
Like the glitch ordinance and what it held up?
Yeah, the glitch ordinance, yeah. And what is the glitch?
So, so let's go to the beginning. The issue with, that they have is that the future land use and the zoning do not match. And this is not something that was recently done. This was not done by the comprehensive plan in '22. It was done by the LDC in 2024. I tried to research, and in the 2003 comprehensive plan, that area shows as public. And, and so they have a public future land use, and they have, right now...
RP.
What is, what is the zoning?
RP.
RP.
RP, residential professional zoning. So the zone is incompatible with the future land use. So today, I think, it's the first time I understand why they, why they are saying that we did not accept an application. I think what happens is that they came for a building permit, straight, because on their perspective, they have the, the existing use there, and that is okay. There is no problem with that. It's considered legally non-conforming at this point because of the inconsistency between zoning and the comp plan. And they went straight for a building permit. And they were told, oh, we need a site plan, first of all, because it's not residential. So it's, you don't go straight to a, a building permit. You have a, have a site plan. And the site plan needs to be, the rezoning has to happen first for us to be able to allow the SDO. But we would allow, during the pre-application that occurred in April, staff told, you know, the representatives from the American Legion that were there, that they could apply right there, right, right now, that, in April, right then, and they would only have to wait for the zoning to be approved first. Staff gave the option, either you can do your own rezoning if you're in a hurry, or you can wait for the glitch ordinance. The glitch ordinance is the ordinance that, well, we approved the LDC last year, and, and it's not uncommon after you approve, it's, it was a whole rewrite. So there were standards that we think it's not very enforceable. There were things that we thought that needed clarification. Then we had, you know, new things from the statutes that we need to update in the code. So we were, you know, this, we started this process to amend the, the LDC, and then as part of that, we decided to tackle all the zonings in the city that were not compatible with the future land use. So we are going to do a massive rezoning. We are tackling 294 properties, including the American Legion. We are tackling 294 properties, including the American Legion. So we told them back then that they could wait for the glitch ordinance. I think there was an issue of the expectation that, you know, when the ordinance would happen. But the issue is that even if we approved today, if we had the power today to approve the rezoning, they still need a site plan. The only thing that will allow them to build is a site plan, and we haven't had a site plan yet. So they can apply for the site plan. They could have applied in April, and they can apply today, tomorrow, and we will review. Because this is, although we are not the approving authority for a rezoning, this is a rezoning for PLI to P. It's the only really zoning that is compatible with public. It's PLI. It's not a situation that we have to decide, you know, in commercial. It's C1 or C2 in office, RP or OC. Now, in this case, PLI is the appropriate zoning. So it's kind of, the chances of not being approved are very slim. That's why we are comfortable that they could apply, and we would review the site plan with the standards of PLI zoning.
And the clarification there, too, is they can apply for their SDO right now. They're not waiting on the glitch ordinance.
They can. They could have applied in April. They could apply now.
Okay. But we're not holding them on that.
No.
Even without a site plan, they can do the SDO?
A site, the SEO is a site plan. They would have, yeah. So the SEO is the...
So they didn't have that, so they've got to get...
They have to, yeah. That's the only way for commercial property to be expanded is to have, because we have to check parking, stormwater. These are all, you know, part of the review.
But there's no turning dirt until the glitch ordinance is passed, correct? So you can do all of this stuff but turn dirt prior, well, I guess...
Well, there is no turning before the zoning is done, but that's already, we already in the schedule for that.
Okay.
And before SEO is approved and the building permit is reviewed and approved. So for a building to be, you know, so they can start the construction, the site construction with SEO, but the vertical construction only with the building permit.
And when is the, I know you sent it out, but how many months until we get the glitch through if everything goes according to plan?
Tomorrow, we are going to have the work session with LPA.
Okay.
December 1st, we have a discussion with the council. And we are planning on December, I think, 15th, LPA first hearing, and then January, the two hearings with council.
Okay.
So at the end of January, we will have the glitch ordinance and the rezoning approved.
More likely that the SDO takes longer than the zoning.
Normally takes longer than that, so they are...
So we won't be holding them up in that regard? Okay. Any more questions?
Yeah. So I don't have the zonings memorized. I apologize. So RP, it's residential professional, if I remember from the email, yeah. So is the issue here that what they're trying to do doesn't meet the zoning, but the existing building predates that zoning, and it's okay?
Yeah. The existing building is okay. An expansion can only be done in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And we have the city attorney here to confirm that.
Yeah. And so what type, what type of zoning is appropriate for the type of building they have? Community center?
PLI.
So PLI is the only one? Okay.
Well, it's the only one that is compatible with the future land use, which is public. They already have public future land use. And that was done back, I don't know when.
And is public better than commercial? Is that what you're getting at?
Well, I don't know. But so we changed some in the, the comp plan update today, or we said, or the transmittal, right, to change some to public that are publicly owned, right? This is not a publicly owned piece of land.
So you're asking why...
How does that work?
I would have to go back to, you know, to the 2000...
2003.
Ordinance to be able to understand. I tried to research, so I saw that in the 2003 comprehensive plan, that area already shows as public. Why it was changed back then, I have no clue.
Yeah. Because it was privately owned since 1957. Yeah. So, okay.
Mr. Ott, if I could just add a little bit. The American Legion is considered an institutional use. Institutional uses are a primary use of the public future land use designation. They're not considered an office. They're not considered a business. They're considered an institutional use. All the different fraternal, nonprofit fraternal organizations are considered. And that's why the public land use is the more appropriate use, land use for them. The residential professional zoning district is not compatible with future land use designation. So there's only one future, one zoning district that is, and that's public land use, unless it's brought up to the code, comp plan and code. So to do the expansion, we've got to get the comp plan, the zoning, everything in line to make that, so that it's done in a way that's not, that is conforming, is what we have to do. And so getting the zoning to match the comprehensive plan, future land use is pivotal in order for them to be able to do their expansion. So, yeah. Does that help?
Is commercial better than PLI? Like, do they have more flexibility? That's what, now that we've been on this, I want to know if they have more flexibility.
From a development standpoint, as far as the standards, as far as siting and location and all that, no. From as far as allowing the various, if they wanted to sell it, probably. It would, it would probably be better for them if they were looking to sell it. If they're looking to stay there, the public's probably better.
So they could knock it down and put in an office park under the current zoning, but not add to the existing building. Is that true?
No.
No. They can't do that either.
They cannot do anything.
Well, not with RP?
No.
They cannot do any expansion or any new construction there because the zoning is inconsistent with the future land use.
They can only do what they're doing now.
Oh, so even though you have zoning, since it's not compatible, you still can't use it?
Yes.
You can use it. You cannot expand.
You can't expand it.
Yeah.
Or put it into a use that is not allowed in the public land use.
All right. I think that's all I've got.
Thank you. Anything else for your report?
Oh, no, I think you've all covered it. We have one of those...
Do we need to talk about the parade? Who's going to be at various things? So we have a tree lighting coming up.
I'm planning on being at the lighting, but not the parade.
Okay. And then I don't think Councilmember Butterford was going to be at the parade either.
I don't know.
That's what I was told. So as far as the float situation, we will coordinate that.
Okay. As long as we can coordinate off the dais, if Mr. Vos can confirm that we are allowed to talk about where we might be parading.
Standing on the parade. I think that's...
Y'all are just going to be talking about the details of who's going to be standing where?
Yes. That is all we're talking about.
That, I think, we'll live with that so long as nobody has too many great concern. I had had a concern before because I understand it had been a matter of great discussion previously in the council. Minutia of such things, not the greatest concern in the world, so.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Then we'll go on to future meeting dates. We have Monday, November 24th.